I'd like to call to order the spring meeting of the Lennox Township Board of Trustees, February 7th, 2022 at 6:31 PM. Please rise and join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's standers. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval meeting agenda.
Mr. Supervisor, we have one change to the agenda, and that's that we are not going to have an audit presentation tonight due to health issues with the auditor. So that is going to be rescheduled for March. Therefore, I make a motion that we remove Item 9, Supervisor's Torque UHY Audit Presentation.
Second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, seconded by Treasurer Hubble. The Deputy Clerk, please follow the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Hurley?
Aye.
Approval of minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the meetings on January 10th, 2020, and January 13th, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Hurley, seconded by Trustee Clifford. The Deputy Clerk, please follow the roll.
Hurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Public announcements. Public comments.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Janet Hartway. I've been a Lennox Township resident for 28 years. Last month's you board brought up the fact that you wanted to change the seal. And you had one entry from a high school, I believe it was. I didn't know anything about the seal, and I, after the meeting, I went and saw Mr. Clifford. And he showed me a picture, a rendition, rendition of the seal that you proposed to change everything. I didn't like it. I think this seal is just fine. I love the colors. Been that way for, I'm not sure how long. But to change it to what that one was, there's nothing out of this Lennox Township. It's a state of Michigan picture with a crane, I believe it was, on where it's supposed to be Lennox Township. Says nothing about Lennox Township on it, unless that's not an incomplete rendition of what the seal was supposed to be. I for one say, don't change it. Don't bother. I think we all like this one. I can't be critical. I take that back. I like this one. Thank you.
2022 Community Development Block Grant CDPG Fund Public hearing.
We open the public hearing for 2022 Community Development Block Grant Fund at 6:33.
Second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, seconded by Treasurer Hubble. The Deputy Clerk, please follow the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Hurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Case seven. Are these supposed to be in the public hearing room?
Okay, according to this year's Community Development Block Grant funding, Lennox Township is to receive $1,800. And we're just open to, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak, as to a request for any of that funding before a decision is made.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Conti, and I'm the Community Outreach Coordinator and interfaith volunteer care givers. With the number of older adults in Macomb County rapidly increasing, the need for support services due to frailties of age, chronic health conditions, or disabilities is growing dramatically and will continue to do so well into the future. For 29 years, our organization has been providing free basic assistance to hundreds of frail, older, and physically challenged adults, helping them remain safely in their homes with the help of over 200 volunteers. Such assistance has been helping older and disabled adults with transportation, chores, rest pit breaks, errands, and loneliness. These opportunities provide fulfilling experiences for those who wish to volunteer, as well as support for those in need. The CDPG Safe At Home Project of IVC is part of our larger chore and repair program for older and disabled adults. The product was developed to provide additional chore and repair services in communities that allocate funds for this purpose. The product allows us to assist low to moderate income seniors and physically challenged adults with indoor and outdoor chores, minor home repairs, and routine housekeeping. We identify individuals who cannot do these tasks on their own and with limited resources, and prioritize those with the greatest need. We are requesting the CDPG funds to increase the number of low-income citizens we can reach to grow our program, as well as coordinate the volunteers who do these services. In 2021, even during the pandemic, we were able to serve almost 450 clients, with almost 150 being served through the Safe At Home program. While we have been able to support a few residents of Lennox over the years, we would love to expand our support, including the Safe At Home Project, further into the community. With our funding received from Lennox for this current program year, we are working to offer this important support service to residents of Lennox. We hope for continued funding for this upcoming year, so that we can continue to build momentum and offer the service to more of those in need into the future in Lennox. The appreciation for the assistance is heartwarming from seniors such as a woman who we helped to install a new toilet when she didn't have one that functioned, and another senior who we helped declutter her home and take donations to Salvation Army and St. Vincent de Paul. Other examples of help through this project may be replacing locks, washing windows, and installing smoke wires. With the CDPG funding, the project can grow, and assistance can be granted to a variety of lower-income Lennox senior citizens and disabled adults. Thank you to the board and everyone here tonight for your consideration. Any dollar amount granted is greatly appreciated in our program, and we thank you for the funds you granted to us last year, as we hope to continue to partner with you going forward. If you know of any seniors who might utilize our services and can use some assistance, please let us know by calling our office or visiting www.ivcinfo.org. And if you have any questions you may have. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dori Oskis Nolan. I'm the Executive Director of CareHouse, the Macomb County Child Advocacy Center. Our main office is located in the city of Mount Lemons, and we also have a satellite office located in the city of Warren. CareHouse is the only agency in Macomb County that offers comprehensive services for child victims of sexual abuse, physical abuse, or children who may have been accused to a violent act, as well as their non-offending family members. Our goals are to minimize the trauma for child victims of abuse and to support the child victim and their non-offending family members through the investigative and prosecution phases, and then help them on the road to healing. CareHouse is an accredited member of the National Children's Alliance and one of over 800 in the United States. We collaborate with all law enforcement jurisdictions in Macomb County, as well as the FBI, Homeland Security, and Immigrations and Customs Enforcement. Those federal agencies are involved in crimes like child pornography or human trafficking. We also work closely with Children's Protective Services, the Macomb County Prosecutor's Office, and medical and mental health professionals. Almost three children in every Michigan classroom and over 20,000 of all of the children right here in Macomb County today are living with the trauma of sexual abuse. These numbers are surely much higher than our best estimates because most children never tell. And sadly, living with sexual abuse is a reality for children of every race, gender, and economic status. These kids could be your kids, your neighbor's kids, your kid's friends, one may have even been you or me. Over 800 child victims of abuse come from every community in Macomb County and start their journey at CareHouse every year. CareHouse also offers intervention and support services for child victims and their parents, including the coordination of forensic interviews, crisis counseling, child safety assessments, trauma-focused therapy sessions, parent and child support groups, family advocacy, access to forensic medical examinations, referrals for other needed community services, and as the designated local consul in Macomb County for the Michigan Children's Trust Fund, CareHouse offers child abuse prevention, education, and training for professionals who work with children and for the community at large. Families are never charged for any of the services that they receive at CareHouse. And I am very proud to report that according to our most recent independent financial audit, over 88 cents of every dollar that comes to CareHouse is specifically devoted for certain children and families in our community. Since we opened in 1996, we've conducted over 9,400 forensic interviews, and 48 of those children were residents of Lennox Township. In 2019, we conducted 757 forensic interviews with three children from Lennox Township. In 2020, our numbers were down a little bit because of COVID. We provided 664 forensic interviews, but again, that included three Lennox Township children. Last year, 2021, we conducted 727 forensic interviews, and again, had three children from Lennox Township. So far, in 2022, we have already provided one forensic interview for a child from Lennox Township. We do depend on the community to provide a voice for child victims in a safe place for them to be heard. We are very grateful for your pass of court, and we respectfully request consideration this year in the amount of $1,200 to provide participative support services for two qualifying child victims and their families who reside in Lennox Township. Of course, we'd be grateful for any amount you were able to give us. For more information about CareHouse, we invite you to visit our website at www.mckarehouse.org and to follow us on our Facebook page. And thanks for your time and consideration. I think I need to answer any questions. Thank you.
Public comment. Close public hearing.
I make a motion for close public hearing at 6:43.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, seconded by Trustee Hurley. The Deputy Clerk, please follow the roll, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Hurley?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
For the trustee's system. Are you starting only two of the applying?
Well, if you look at your paperwork, there's...
There's also two more applicants.
Yeah. He's looking on the table tonight.
If there's no more discussion, I believe most will be ignored.
I would like to make a motion that we allot $148 requested by interfaith caregivers. We allot $400 to CareHouse. Remaining $1,052 to be turned over to our senior center.
I'll second that. The Deputy Clerk, please follow the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Hurley?
Aye.
Consent agenda. All items listed on this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board will be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public has a request at or prior to the meeting, in which event the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under Agenda Item Number 8 below. Approval of the consent agenda shall be by majority, roll call vote of those present and voted.
And invoices to be approved in the amount of $1,814,140.13. I will let you know that 1.4 million of that is the sewer debt payment to the county. That's why it's so high this time.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the orders of bills in the amount of $1,814,140.13.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Hurley, supported by Treasurer Hubble. The Deputy Clerk, please follow the roll.
Hurley?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Unfinished business Township Seal Update. Mr. Preb.
Good evening, Board. This evening, we're bringing forward the Township trustee, or excuse me, the Township Seal update request. That seal has been brought forward. There was items put out to four of the schools that we touched with in the community requesting feedback from them. We sent this out early July, again, at the end of August, verifying that the schools were actually participating. We, in fact, received from one, returned back from the four schools. And I believe the board has packets with those. At this point in time, we're looking at being able to get some updates to this. The Township Seal has never been voted on or approved. This is an outstanding issue. We do have some items within the building and the structures that we're not going to be able to change or modify, and we recommend that we do not do that, recommend the modifications to the mortar and brick and so on that's already in place. At this time, I would like to bring it back. A lot of the board any questions or open for comments? As we did hear a resident this evening speak about earlier in public comments, the resident did make a statement concerning that. And we are looking at this trying to update and modify the Township Seal. So with that in mind, I will bring it back up to the board for your discussion or your project.
This is going on back to the board, the key terms I did talk about changing the standard. Right now, at this time, I realize we haven't gotten one from the first one, and obviously that I'm happy with what we have. And this time, I would recommend that we don't make any change to what we have this time. It's never officially voted on, but right now, I think it needs to be changed. I make a motion to leave it approved as the Township Seal.
Mr. Clifford, if you remember correctly, we voted back in June to approve this contest.
We did not vote. We got one half, and we didn't vote on that. We don't have to accept that.
I don't, excuse me, but I don't know that any, I can only speak for myself, but I don't ever remember seeing what was even submitted by the person, the one submission that we got. I don't think it was ever shared with the board. Did you ever see it?
No.
Last month, that one that was submitted by the community council, that was, that was one that...
I don't know if that's what was actually submitted by that person. I don't think I've ever seen a drawing of what was actually submitted. Was my understanding that what we're looking at was a revised version of what was submitted. I would, as a board member, like to see what was submitted.
The one that we were, you know, one thing we were showing, I was only questioning that was what was submitted by the person. The only person that declared, the person that accepted it was Supervisor's office or whoever. I, that's the one I looked at last month, and I was looking forward to it. And I don't, right now, I don't believe we should accept it, but that's something.
I think we have some clarification to do on this. I think we should table this until next month.
Well, if you could table it until next month, I think we're perfect. They're all wanting to see the original. Would that be reasonable?
It is somewhere in my emails. Like I said, for clarification purposes, so we can get it to everyone. I believe we should table this.
It doesn't change. I think it's not going to change, but that's talked to the board. Do you want to see it some easier?
I think first we have an open motion on the floor by you that we have to wait. We have to see, we have seconds. We have no seconds. Then we'll...
Was that, was that a motion to table?
My motion was to accept what we have. We have, as I said, all of that.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, seconded by Treasurer Hubble. The Deputy Clerk, please follow the roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Sheldon, Hurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Nay.
Reader?
Nay.
New business, gypsy moth control presentation. I believe there was supposed to be someone here from the county presenting this today. I, in my packets, you should have a email from the senior extension educator. They're in partnership with the Macomb County MSU. There is an infestation of gypsy moths at 30 miles of county line. Due to her not being here, I would motion to pay for this.
Second.
I have a motion by the chairs, supported by Clerk Candell. May the Deputy Clerk, please follow the roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Hurley?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Township Office, Township to do. Office waiting, Township to do.
Everybody should have in their packet, the contract for B and B Commercial Cleaning. They're the company that cleans the office. The new agreement, which would commence on February, well, it commenced on February 28th, is for a year at a weekly cost of $240. We're currently paying $200 a month. This has not gone out to bid to anybody else at this point. Our current vendor.
I will make a motion to renew the contract with, um, the contract with the cleaning people that we have now.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Hubble, supported by Trustee Clifford. The Deputy Clerk, please follow the roll.
Connel?
Aye.
Clifford?
Candell? Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Hurley?
Aye.
2022 limestone program applications and regulations. Mr. Preb.
Good evening, Board. This evening, you're going to find the information from the county in front of you requesting our annual limestone base contract. This is for three miles of county roads within Township. Once again, we're going to ask that you go ahead and approve this contract, and then our DPW Director Cam traveling along the offices of the county, making sure that we complete the actual study and get the roads approved. As of right now, the roads are snow covered. We cannot give you an accurate information. So March 15th, this is required to be due at the county, but we're asking the board to approve for the, I believe the amount was 23,000 for the three miles of roads, which is pretty much almost close to the last year's.
Something like that.
Yeah, real close to last year's, and I want to say 23,000 was the figure we had last year also for three miles. 22.5, I think. Yeah, it did very slight increase if any, but Cam has done a great job of going out and making sure. We've only had a couple of complaints with requests for indications, and those have been passed on, so Cam can add that to the system to take a look at between, I believe, Placed Road and Part 29 Mile Road for consideration as we're looking at this limestone project. With that, I'll bring it back to the board and ask for consideration for you to vote approval for us to go forward with the contract and allow the DPW to finalize the information with the county for the roads. And we'll share that back with the board once we get an effective decision.
Thank you, Mark. Having a motion to approve the contract that's broken, as decided by our engineer at the DPW forever, again, the county, I want a motion done in the procedure, but I motion to approve it.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Trustee Hurley. The Deputy Clerk, please follow the roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Hurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Medical marijuana provisional certificate.
Good evening. As you recall, we had a third round of the applications that came into the Township that terminated December 21st in '21. During that time, we received applications from four different entities for five different locations. These applicants have all been reviewed, respecting the township's policy that campus style facilities would provide the best long-term investment, and only those applicants seeking to grow, process, and provide provisioning facilities on the same partial should be awarded provisional certificates, and they all have submitted for that. So I'm going to be recommending the following, and this is in no particular order. Canacal Campus, which is property ID 0627402003, which is on the east side of Ratchet between 27 and 28, they've requested one provisioning license, one processing license, and one grow license, and I'm recommending all three of those. Common Citizen, oh, property is 0612276012, they're on the east side of Ratchet, it's up their 30 and 31 mile road. They're requesting provisioning, processing, and grow. They're requesting provision, processing, and grow. I'm recommending that they be allowed, all three of those. Then there's Grow It Pro on the east side of Ratchet, up there 30 and 31 mile roads, property ID 061230038. They're asking for one provisioning, one processing, and grow. I'm recommending approval of those. We have an entity that actually has two different sites, Community Veterans of Lennox, property ID 062720010, that's on the east side of Ratchet, around 27, 28 mile road, and they're requesting for one provisioning, one processing, and one grow, and we're recommending approval of that. Then we have the same entity, which is asking for licensing up on the west side of Ratchet, 30, 31 mile road area, property 0612201025, is called Community Veterans North on your listing. They were actually asking for two provisionings on the same property, two processing, two grow, and one transport. Their intent is to, when we questioned why they needed two provisioning centers on the same property, their intent was that they're intending to split the property. At this time, I'm recommending one provisioning, one processing, one grow, and one transport, and the other three, we held up bans until such time as the property is split, and then we'll bring them back to the township board for a recommendation. I'm recommending that all these provisional certificates be approved subject to the following: compliance with state regulations, compliance with Lennox Township marijuana facilities, including, and the zoning ordinance, including those provisions relative to distancing requirements, compliance with all requirements of planning, building, and engineering, compliance with the Macomb County Department requirements, particularly the Department of Roads, Department of Health. Submission of an application for special land use approval within six months. Receipt of a building permit within 12 months. No occupancy permit, either temporary or final, shall be issued for any provisioning center prior to the occupancy permit being issued for the grow and processing. Grow facilities must be constructed in an industrial type building capable of being easily retrofitted to manufacturing warehouses should the application cease to exist. A reminder to the board that our licensing ordinance does not allow the transferring of any licenses. So this should be the conditions that I'm recommending approval.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the five provisioning certificates as outlined by Mr. Kessin, following the guidelines Mr. Kessin also outlined, which were compliance with state regulations regarding medical marijuana, compliance with Lennox Township marijuana facilities ordinance, compliance with applicable provisions of the Lennox Township zoning ordinance, compliance with applicable township planning, building, and engineering requirements, compliance with applicable Macomb County requirements, submission of an application for special land use approval to the Lennox Township Planning Commission within six months, receipt of a building permit for construction within 12 months, no occupancy permit, temporary or final, shall be issued for any provisioning center prior to an occupancy permit being issued for the grow and processor facilities on the same property. And grow facilities must be constructed in an industrial type building capable of being easily retrofitted to a manufacturing slash warehousing operation should the grow facility cease to exist.
I second. I have a motion by Court Candell, seconded by trustee Clifford. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Amendment to section 2202 of Lennox Township ordinance 2-93. Mr. Kelly, if you want to give brief overview, overview?
Absolutely. So, really two orders is here, the first is a repealer, the section 2202, the zoning ordinance, in order to remove the section that essentially already been removed by Operation of Law, which may update the General Behaving Act, and then having...
Reader?
You're my top. Because I was coughing a lot, I didn't want to bug everybody. That's my excuse. And so then we have a separate Planning Commission enable ordinance outside the body of zoning ordinance. I would say that if you do approve the new Township Planning Commissioning ordinance, they do so subject to a small administrative non-substantive change. Section 10 should be section 13. There's two section 10s, right? Section 10, section 11, section 12, and then it goes back to section 10, and it should actually just be section 13 for effective date. This is the version I have, which is the one that I sent you. You and I make mistakes sometimes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Lennox Township Planning Commission ordinance as presented by Mr. Kelly, with section, the second section 10 titled effective date being renumbered section 13.
I second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, seconded by Chair Haddam. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Employment status, employee number 311.
Okay, I'm sure you were all aware, we have an employee who has been, she was on the Family Medical League Act for a while. We have not heard from her since before her Family Medical League Act, or after her Medical League Act has expired. We've sent several letters and correspondence. It's all laid out for you in a memo that was typed up on February 2. You should all have a copy of it. I'm recommending at this point that we vote to terminate the employment of employee I'll second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, supported by Chair Haddam. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Karen Turchi, Lennox Township resident. I just want to say that I agree with partial of the board that voted, and also the resident, that the seal as it is looks fine. There would just be too much expense to change everything. I think it's presentable. You can clearly see it's Lennox Township. Also, I just had a question on what actually is a loving Eve? Or is there something I should talk to planner about, or I don't... What was the change on? I mean, what was the amendment that you just voted on?
We're not allowed to say it directly.
Okay, should I, who should I speak to after? Because I have no idea what it was about.
You did come to see me, I think we do a part in what we just...
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Call for a board. The jury.
I make a motion we adjourn at 7:10.
Second.
I have a motion by Chair Haddam, supported by trustee Gurley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.